Yeah.
Okay, I motion to move to enter to executive session to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And that would be for the Medfield Teachers Association, Unit A and B, AFL-CIO Custodians, Cafeteria Workers and Secretaries. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll call Megan. And roll call, Anna May O'Shea Brooke.
Yep, yes, please.
Okay, and Megan Glenn.
Yes.
And Jessica Riley, yes, we will reconvene in open meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Owen.
We just returned from executive session in which we discussed matters covered under exception three of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. The discussions pertained to the Medfield Teachers Association Units A and B and the AFL-CIO Custodians Cafeteria Workers and Secretaries Units. So I am now going to call to order this April 1st regular session of the Medfield School Committee meeting, beginning with a roll call, Leo Bram. Leo.
Yep, sorry, Eric.
And Tim Knight.
Here.
Thanks, Tim. Megan Glenn.
Here.
All right, Anna May, oh, Anna May, that's too bad. All right, Anna May O'Shea Brooke.
Here.
Too early in the evening for me to be doing that. And Jessica Riley here. Okay, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Medfield TV YouTube channel after this meeting within a day or so. So at this point, what I'm going to do is call for public input. Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action or discussion at the meeting at which the item is presented. And to indicate that you would like to offer a comment on an item that is not on this evening's agenda, please use the raise your hand icon on the screen. When you are brought over, please tell us your full name and your address for the public record, and then you'll have three minutes to make your statement. So I'm gonna give a little time here, and I always need a second set of eyes to make sure that I'm not missing anybody's hand raised. Give it a little bit more time. I'm not seeing anyone. All right. I'm going to call it. There was no public comment tonight. Okay. So then we'll move on to the approval of minutes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of February 11th, 2000, I'm sorry, 2021. The workshop held on February 26th, 2021, and the joint meeting held with the Board of Health on March 9th, 2021. So do I hear a move, motion to approve those? So moved. All right, Anna May, so moved. And do I hear a second?
A second.
Tim Knight. So I'll do a roll call. So the first, Leo Bram.
Sorry, mute button here. Yes, I.
And Tim Knight.
Yes.
Megan Glenn.
Yes.
Anna May O'Shea Brooke.
Yeah.
Why is that going to be a problem tonight? I don't know. Yes, yes, Anna May O'Shea Brooke. Yes, and Jessica Riley. Yes. Okay, the motion passes. And then do I hear a motion to approve and retain the executive session minutes of March 11th and March 23rd, 2021?
So moved.
Okay, Megan Glenn, do I hear a second?
Second, Anna May.
Anna May. Okay, and then our roll call again. So sorry, guys, welcome to remote. Okay, so Leo Bram.
Hi.
And Tim Knight.
Hi.
Megan Glenn.
Hi.
Anna May O'Shea Brooke.
Hi.
And Jessica Riley, I. And the motion passes. Those minutes are approved and they are approved and they are retained. Okay. So the next thing we're going to do is our two essentially updates fiscal year 21 budget update. And then after that, we'll do the school learning progress, school learning model progress. And I will open the floor to comments on both of those topics after the committee finishes its discussion of the two. Okay, so I'm going to hand that over to you, Dr. Marston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in terms of the FY21 budget update, since our last meeting, we went over that memo that we sent on on trying to get our deficit to zero. We don't have another update because Michael closed out March yesterday. And we'll have a full report as we've done every other meeting on April 15th.
Okay.
So we'll have a pretty good sense. I don't know, Mike, I don't want to add anything else to that, but I I feel like that's kind of what we have talked about, and I know you'll have that ready to go on the 15th.
Yep, I will have the full report at our next school committee meeting with all the July through March's operational expenses.
Okay, all right. Anybody on the committee have any thoughts or would we just want to move on to the next Leo Bram?
Yeah, the only thing I was wondering is, could we have a backup of the list from last year? Jeff and Mike, from the items that we cut from the budget to balance the budget last June due to the uncertainty of COVID and where we were headed for the next meeting, just to review. I'm just curious as what we gave up to review, you know, to review, and I think we should bring it back to the table just around programming. And honestly, I'd like your input on it too around. Because I know there's a lot of back and forth around what was happening around what we were cutting, right? There was a lot of yeah, there was a lot of information that was going back and forth around, you know, the programming that was being cut and how important it was to them. I'm just curious as to what was able to be restored to the, you know, to the attrition process that we engaged in and what was lost. And if there's any opportunity for restoring any of that in the coming budget process as we were able to, you know, meet the town's goals and the state has picked up. The state has picked up the pool testing that we need. I think that the community is interested in hearing more about that. That's all.
Sure. So you want to look at the, what we, that cut?
Exactly. Yeah. And I know you guys use that cut list too, you know. You know, I know what happens behind the scenes when you go back, you try to keep everything you possibly can. So but what was lost and what, what do you, what do you prioritize as restoring to run the district better is what I want to know, because I think that us as a committee want to know what we need to go out and fight for.
That's a great idea.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any thoughts right now before we go on to the school learning model progress? Anyone? Okay. Jeff, do you want to, Dr. Marston, you want to move on to kind of where we are in terms of moving forward?
Sure, sure. So we're really pleased to have grades K through five in full time. And as you know, we, we brought in last week our grades two through five students, which was awesome. A lot of community support around that. Kids are really excited. The energy in the schools is completely different than it was, you know, earlier in the year. So really happy to have that and looking forward to having our middle and high school kids join in the next couple of weeks. I do want to recognize we had 21 parents that, that helped out and they helped us move furniture from building the building, set up classrooms, put the dividers on classroom and on desk in classroom. And it was just a really great help. So I just want to thank those parents that did that. And I know, Tim, Leo, you were one of them, that's for sure, with that smile on your face. You did a good job, Leo.
Actually, it was Mike Lanfrancesca with the toolkit. You should see him. He took the guy, he took the instruction manual out and everything. He was out there. He was like.
And so that's worked out really well. And I know that that really came from the group that, that Tim had brought together, you know, a few months ago. So I want to thank him for that work. And we still meet every Thursday. And it was just a really great community spirit, just like we had, we had talked about it. It reminded me of when a, a community sets up a purchases a playground, everyone gets together and puts it all together. It was very similar to that. It was a great, great experience. So I want to thank everyone for that. And our kids are, and our teachers are just really excited to have everyone back in. A little bit different at the middle and high school because we didn't have to move a lot of furniture back and forth because it was all there. So now we're having our custodians doing that on the night shift. We have an extra guy in there and they're helping out and they're setting up, setting up the room. So they've, they've done sections of the high school and sections of the, the middle school. The middle school will be ready probably by Saturday morning because we have to install a couple of things. And then the high school will definitely be ready by the time they're ready to go on the, on the 12th. So it's just really exciting. I know that you know, everyone has been looking forward to this day and no one has looked forward more than our teachers and our kids. And we're just really excited for have the kids back.
I think it's going to be PTO definitely had a lot to do with that, right? I mean, they, they seem to organize and get those people, those parents there for sure.
Right. It was great. Really, really, really great effort all around. So I'll, when I get into the outlook for 2021, I'll actually, I could talk about it now because it probably fits in there better. One of the things that we've been looking at and Christine Powers and working on is looking at the concept of, you know, where we are instructionally and learning and, and whether or not we, we fit the media narrative of learning loss that we've all heard so much about in the past six or seven months. So we've done a preliminary analysis and some takeaways on that. And Christine's going to come in to the first May meeting and give a full report on that. But I want to just share a little bit of what she's found so far. And we've done this as a leadership team and she's, she's done some interviews with our principals and, and teachers and department chairs and looking at as student test data, et cetera. So the preliminary analysis indicates that although there were significant changes to curriculum instruction, assessment practices across the district, in general, there were limited impacts to the scope of student learning. This does not mean that all students perform well under this model, but the data indicate that very, very limited impact on our student learning. So some of the specifics, I'm just going to talk about a couple of them. I have 11 pages in front of me. I'm not going to go through 11 pages. I'm going to go through two, just hit the highlights. But I think that once this is all completed and out of draft form, it would be great for you to see and share with the community in May. So in terms of curriculum, in response to the change in the teaching format, most teachers focused on curriculum standards. As a result, in almost all disciplines, curriculum standards were met. This is reflected in teacher interview data, learning map, map artifacts and standardized test data K to five. Instruction to adapt to the reduction of face-to-face learning, teachers streamline their units all while maintaining curriculum expectations. For example, some English classes read one fewer novels, science classes trimmed extraneous non-framework related content in math and social studies, teachers reduced the length of their units. Most classes modified how they assess students seeking more authentic assessments. For example, writing essays and taking verbal tests that could be completed during at-home days during the hybrid model. So some of the feedback that I've gotten as a result of this is that when they were working in the hybrid model, having nine or 10 kids in a class really allowed teachers to go deep on topics and not have their full class load in there. So that was certainly something that helped out, even though they weren't in front of their teachers five days a week, there was still some positives that came out of that. So many silver linings have emerged as a result of the adaptations and reassessment of longstanding teaching practices. Some of these included increased collaboration among teachers, increased focus on the standards, improved use of impactful digital tools and streamlining practices and protocols. It's, for example, Google Classroom, Google Drive to support students and teachers. So at DLD last week, one of the things I, I mentioned in my, my opening was we can't abandon now the practices that we found that have been really positive for kids. Let's, let's, let's build on what we've seen so far. Let's build on what we've done in terms of our instruction, especially with technology. And Leo, you've been close to this for many, many years. We've been hearing forever that technology was going to change instruction and learning. And we've, we've always seen it in pockets, but I would say that what we saw in the past year really led to the fact that technology actually changed instruction and learning. And whether people were forced to do it, that's one thing or another, but it actually did it. And now we need to build on that and that momentum on that to keep it going for the benefit of our kids.
Yeah, Jeff, I have to say that I always sent you an email. I apologize. That was a reactive email that I sent last week.
By the way, I went to my spam account for some reason. I just started yesterday.
I know, but I sent it from my Cape Cod account for some reason. I don't know why. But Christine found it, just sent it back to me. And it was really about that homeschool connection that was created in the very light form of those assignments that exist in, in the Google Classroom assignment list that parents at the younger level, at least at the lower level, we have access to, right? I'm sure at the upper level. I'm sure Jess, maybe, and Megan, your kids are not letting you into their Google account.
There was no choice. But we do get actually assessments or summaries at the high.
Well, yeah, there's, they do that. They do a summary email, but it's not, and it's not the best. Google doesn't do it the best, I will tell you. But what we did have being used was very effective. So it allowed us to support the teacher in the classroom at home. And I think that's what parents were just really crying out for. And it's and around that curriculum management piece has always been something I've been very passionate about. And I think that, like you said, Jeff, this, that's the silver lining to this year is that we've had to come together and collaborate. Our teachers have come together and collaborate, have found really strong methods of doing that. And they've done a wonderful job. And I, I just don't want to see that fall apart and, and have that fall the way it said. And I get the extra work. So like, I, I want to take the best out of what we've, what we've developed. And hopefully we can move forward with some of those pieces. When we had to go back to the folder, like, we literally lost a week because our teacher said, oh, we're going back to the folder now. And we didn't know, right? And I was like, no! That was the reaction. So no, you're a hundred percent right. I appreciate that. And I, and I'm glad that you guys are looking at that. That's a hundred.
You know, in the standardization too of the platforms, right? I think in, in March, we, it was kind of, you know, it was, it was a two-week shutdown that went for the rest of the year. So we didn't have the standardization of all the platforms which we had in place for the fall and for this year, which really, you know, made a difference for definitely for families and certainly for kids. So as a result of, you know, what we're talking about, the, the data that we've gotten from standardized tests at the elementary level, students have shown growth in both language arts and math, and most students meet or exceed the established benchmark levels at this point. So the data is coming in, it is positive. And we'll have the full report, but I just want folks to know that this is definitely on our radar. Things we're watching, we're looking at, and we're committed to supporting students that need additional support, whether it's over the summer or next year. But we're, what we're finding is really positive as far as student learning and achievement. So just to kind of a preview of what's going to come to you in May, but Christine's working real hard on that. And it's, it's on our radar to work on for the next, the next few weeks. So Madam Chair, that's all I had for, for that student learning model update.
I'm sorry, Jeff. I, I just think it's one of many, many postmortems, quote unquote, that we're going to end up doing throughout the next 18 months around not only student learning, but how, how do we consolidate the really positive things? And also, and I would like to see this, you know, in terms of legislatively as well as, you know, and at the state level and at the federal level, how do we kind of neutralize the process of responding to a pandemic? How do we have an instruction manual in place that at least gives you guidelines so that everyone knows and does not get doesn't get lost in the, the shuffle of trying to figure out who has the greatest need or not being sure, you know, exactly what a pandemic is or how far it's going. Or, you know, that there's going to be a lot of, of kind of introspection and we're not out of it yet. In fact, you know, I think we know that there have been reports about that, that there is kind of a fourth wave that seems to be coming right now. And obviously, we're going to be responding to that in terms of safety and, and everything else. But you know, we need to know going forward from here. We never want to have, even that first six months, we never want to have that again. I think we could have prevented so much of this loss, you know, just as a, as a country, as a society. And I would really like to, to think that we are able to kind of, at least here, but also within the state, really investigate where we were and what we can do better next time.
Yeah, and I think the MCAS data will, you know, definitely surface some, some issues or whatever, you know, and that's really there's no accountability for the district tied to that this year. It's really diagnostic for us to take a look at it. So, you know, we don't even, you know, we're still not a hundred percent sure we're actually going to have MCAS, but we're, we're still working to stay on that. As a, not just us, but everyone. But I just think it's important to, to just not, not to just fall into that narrative of, of learning loss, learning loss, learning loss. Because, you know, we're watching it, we're on it. And again, we're not saying every child, but we're saying that a good point, a good percentage of our kids, based on what we've looked at so far for data is that is, is positive and going in the right direction in that, you know, we'll have the full report in May, but it's, it's on our radar. I know there's, there's been some concerns about that, but we, we've been watching it.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have any comments or questions about that, thoughts about the learning progress model? I mean, I think obviously we're going back. Middle school's going back next week. And the week after that is the high school, and then we'll have April vacation. And I, I think I'm probably speaking to the choir when I say, get tested, be safe, don't go anywhere if you don't absolutely have to go. And if you do, wear a mask and wash your hands and then get tested again. Because this, these are our kind of vulnerable points. And I also want to mention that we have kind of pulled these two agenda items out over the last like three or four months because we wanted to be able to let people know what's going on right away at the beginning of the meeting. So they don't have to kind of check out like Anna May with the yawning. But at this point, we are, you know, fiscal year 21 is almost over, the year that never ended. And the, you know, we have moved on with our student learning progress. This part of getting our kids back into school is very close to being done. So when we discuss these again, I think we're probably going to end up folding them back into old business and go back to our traditional model of the agenda for the school committee meeting. So the next time you tune in, don't be surprised if we've just kind of go straight from public input to new business. Moving forward. So do I have any public comment? And I'm assuming that the committee is good with their comments right now or discussion at this point?
And we can, I'll just, as you wait for public comment.
Well, I'm not, I haven't called for it yet. So.
Okay, well, if people are getting ready. No, I was, I'll say so far, one, I'm really, really excited. The middle school is going to open up.
I just need to let people know the unless you really want to talk about the student learning model, but let me just bring people over and let them know what they have to do before.
Yeah, it was linked, but I, I can hold.
Oh, no, no, please then. Go ahead.
I was just saying, within the student learning model as, as part of that, as you opened up the elementaries, it was great. I'm super excited for the middle school. I will say my expectation for the elementary was there was going to be more little issues that popped up. And that was incredibly smooth. I'm optimistic for the middle school. And the one area, I'm guessing I'm looking towards Michael, you can't see, is how they're going to manage that traffic through the middle school. Is every day I drop off alley and my brain is really moving, trying to think about it. So I'm, I'm excited to see what we come up with as people get through it. But I sincerely am excited and congratulations so far. Let's, let's hope for the, you know, similar result with middle school next week.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. Okay. Yeah. Sorry, Tim, I really didn't want to cut you off. I just wanted to make sure that you could be within that part of the discussion if you, if you wanted. So if there is any public comment on either the budget or fiscal year 21 budget update or the school learning progress model, if you would like to comment, please hit the raise hand icon on your screen and then announce your full name and your address. And then we'll do three minutes. Each person who would want to comment can have three minutes. Am I getting any, give you about another 30 seconds or so to kind of think about it, get it together? All right. Then I think we should move on to new business. So this is the high school advisory. So our high school students can come over if they would like. We have Catherine Bannister or Elizabeth. Yeah, Catherine's there. Catherine, do you want to go first or do you want to, you good with that? And we also have Elizabeth Pansyaco and Carrie White. Is she here? Hi, Carrie. Oh, Ellen's way ahead of me. And Eva O'Toole. All right, where? Eva O'Toole. Oh, you guys are so good. All right. Why don't we start with Catherine? Hi, Catherine, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thanks. What's up?
So I'm Catherine Bannister. I'm representing the class of 2024. So we just finished an apparel fundraiser for our grade. We sold sweatshirts and joggers. And thank you to everyone who bought those. Um, we handed out everything and we got a handful of orders. That was really successful. We're now working on a new fundraiser. We're making Medfield flags. So we're working on getting it approved right now. We have them already designed. We're getting a sample right now. And they're great for like basements, bedrooms, classrooms. And we are also thinking of distributing these to any seniors who are interested in putting them on their cars for the rolling rally, which we are hoping will get a good deal of sales. We also will post this in a variety of places because we last, um, we found out that we didn't publicize our apparel very well. So we will definitely post this on a variety of places. And we've also extended our social media platforms to be more successful with our sales. Um, so be on the lookout for those purchases. We're also working on a fundraiser for a restaurant, but we don't know the details yet. As of right now, everyone's looking forward to going back to school normally and just to see everyone and get back to school with friends and the other cohort. And it will definitely be an adjustment, but it's progress to get back to normal. And that's all that matters. So.
Yeah, 1% better is better than no percent better, right? Or 10 or 25. Yeah, thank you, Catherine. I appreciate it. All right, how about Elizabeth?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Elizabeth Pansyaco, and I'm the representative for the class of 2023. So there hasn't, I don't have a lot to update you about since the last time I was here. Not a lot has changed, but we did start pool testing, which has been very efficient, very good, super positive. Except for the test results, everything's been negative, but so, yeah.
I got it. I got it.
So recently, just this week, the classes have been set up. So most of the desks are in the room, which is definitely really weird to see because they're all close together, obviously on guideline and everything, but it's just definitely weird to see. And it's getting, we're all getting excited to go back April 12. That's definitely going to be a big adjustment going back five days a week, but then we have April break next week. So it's fine. So this past week for advisory, we decided that we were able to choose a certain topic based on, we were given a list of topics to choose from. And we could go to the, like, the activity that we wanted to and learn about that instead of just going to like our advisory and just talking. So there are a bunch of different activities that we could do, which was really cool. It's a good way to mix up the schedule. National Honor Society stuff has started to come out for the sophomores. So that process is starting and it's kind of sweet this week. So SUCO has been working on that for a while. So if, when you walk into the high school, you'll see the lobby is decorated with a bunch of positive quotes. There's also a compliment wall. So everyone in SUCO wrote a compliment for each kid in the school and it's on a sticky note and it's on the wall in the lobby. And every kid can go up, look at it and take the compliment back with them. There's also. There's also
Oh, you're frozen.
Positive, everything included. And then there's also a kindness chain that you just have to write something positive that happened to you. And yeah, just something that, something good that happened to you that day. Um, as far as student government goes, we haven't really, our last fundraiser was really successful, so we have not really decided on what to do for another one, we might not do one, but we, we also might do the blankets again for, you know, for graduation presents.
I love.
We don't know yet.
We know this, I'm sorry, I might be a little obsessed, I love that blanket.
Oh, thank you so much, thank you. Um, but yeah, that's about it for me and thank you.
Thank you Elizabeth, I appreciate it. And guys, don't go away because I, we, I'm going to open it up to the rest of the committee after this, just to kind of check in with you before, before you go, so. Uh, Carrie? Hi Carrie.
Hi everyone, uh, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Carrie White, I'm the representative for the class of twenty twenty two. Uh, I'll start by saying the junior class is hanging in there, it's safe to say that from everyone I've talked to, semester two is really kicking our butts, but we're getting through it, um. Last Wednesday, March twenty fourth, a large majority of the juniors took the SAT at the high school. And we're so lucky that we had this offered for us and it's like so many of my friends, um, a lot of the SATs in like surrounding towns and stuff have been getting canceled, so it's really good that that was offered to us and then now we're just waiting for those scores to come back. And then on top of SAT and SA, SAT and ACT setting, uh, the juniors are the juniors have been taking on a heavy workload, as I said, and the warm weather is really helping us out. For student government, uh, we've been told to hold off on plans for prom as of right now. Um, even though we've been eager to continue planning the event, the focus is more on the seniors, which is very understandable. So, um, that being said, student government doesn't have too much going on right now, but we do have a couple of, of ideas on things that we want to do once, um, both cohorts are back full time. Which I know many of the juniors cannot wait for, April twelfth can't come soon enough and after seeing the success that elementary schools have had, nobody can stop ta- nobody can stop talking about how soon that will be us. It's crazy to think this time last year, we were just learning how to use Zoom and now we can finally, hopefully, a year later, leave it all behind. Student council, as Kate, as Elizabeth was saying, um, has been super busy with kindness week. So the many gestures have definitely raised a lot of the school spirit. Additionally, many juniors on student council are preparing to run for the executive board, which is also exciting. So that's been a lot of work too, and then fall two sports have been going super well, and although it has been a nice break for many student athletes, a lot of the class of twenty twenty two cannot wait for spring sports to start in just twenty five days. Um, as far as the pool testing, like Elizabeth was saying again, I think it's been running super smoothly, it's super easy for all the students and many are participating in it, which is also good news. I've also talked to a few juniors who have already gotten or about to get their vaccine, which is also good news, so hopefully that will be more of us. And then, pretty sure that's all I have for you tonight. The junior class is ready to take advantage of the long weekend and hope you all have a happy Easter relaxing long weekend.
You have a great long weekend too, Carrie, thank you. All right, Eva, thank you, would you like to come on over?
So, oh, sorry.
No, you go, go.
Okay, um, I'm Ava Toole and I am the representative for the class of the twenty twenty one. So seniors spring is finally here and I know that a lot of seniors are starting to get excited because we're so close to the end. And there's just a lot of exciting things that could potentially happen for us in the spring, because I think that's kind of what we've been holding on to this whole year is senior spring will be better than the rest of the year. Um, so student government has been meeting with Mr. Spurling and our advisors uh, many times over the past few months to kind of discuss, um, what the likelihood of these events would be and how we would plan them. Um, so obviously the biggest of these events and most important to most of the seniors is prom, which is scheduled for May fourteenth at Gillette and we're hoping that, um, if capacity restrictions lift to about two hundred to two hundred fifty people, I believe it's at one hundred fifty for outside right now. But since vaccinations are rolling out, we're hoping that they start to increase, um, so this event could happen and we're really hopeful that it will because we seem to be moving in the right direction. Um, and Mr. Spurling also had a meeting with all the seniors that could go and go into the meeting and ask questions about different senior activities that were going to happen, he presented to them. And um, he also sent out a Google form, which would kind of gauge the interest of seniors going to these events, we could have a better idea of the numbers, um, so we could make these events possible. But now that all the seniors are in the loop of what's going on, I definitely have seen like a morale boost for all of them and I hope that this, um, that these events will happen so that it, that morale can stay high after this hard year. Um, also, another update with student government is that we discussed with Mr. Spurling and our advisors that we would not be giving a senior class gift this year, um, but rather spend the money that we had left over either going towards a different event or prom tickets, like reducing the cost because we've already missed out on so much and Mr. Spurling says that most of the years, um, the senior gifts like don't even end up happening because people go off to college, they have summer plans and the money just kind of sits there. So he said it would be a good idea, um, for us to kind of just use the money for ourselves, which we thought was a good idea because that's a good way to kind of give back to our class after not being able to do much this year. And it would just celebrate us further. Um, also, like I'd want to say a huge thank you to the senior parents who are also doing other activities on the side. Um, there's been, I think we're going to have a second Chick-fil-A drive-through, um, lunch next week. Um, and they had a scavenger hunt for us a few weeks ago, which was really fun, we got to drive around town with a bunch of our friends and go visit old, um, nostalgic places that we used to go and it was really, really fun, a lot of people participated, so um, it was a lot more fun than I thought it was going to be, so, and I, that was pretty much the consensus, consensus. Um, I, along with all the other students who participated. And also Mr. Spurling has been a huge help in all of this, like he's been communicating with other people, um, to make sure that these events have a possibility, um, of happening, so we're super grateful to have him as a resource. Um, and one thing I did notice is, um, now that we're going to be going back in full with all the cohorts together, um, I noticed that today that some of my classrooms started to have like the desks, all the desks in there, I'm, I'm not sure if this is permanent, but um, it seemed like that the desks were three feet apart, but exactly three feet apart, so all of them were clumped onto one side of the room and then there was a lot of space on the other side of the room. So I don't really know if that's permanent, I know like some of the okay, some of the teachers are commenting on it. Okay, yeah, they were like, this is a little weird, like this, there's so much room over here, so I thought I would just bring that up anyway, but.
When you came in on the twelfth, they'll be where they need to be.
Okay, awesome, but yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you Eva. So before you guys go away, I do want to see the, would anybody on the, the committee or Dr. Marsden, Mr. Lafrancescu, anybody like to kind of ask, talk, understand, I do have one question, Carrie reflected to us that the second half of the second semester of junior year is really kind of a, a butt kicker. Are, are you guys, Elizabeth or Eva or Catherine, feeling that intensity as well right now in terms of your academic work? Or is that more kind of specifically around the junior experience, do you think?
Um, I know for at least the seniors, a lot of them have solidified their future plans, whether it be a gap year or college.
So we should just be excited that you're here at all.
Yeah, pretty much, um, so like the seniors aren't too stressed, obviously they're still preparing for tests and there's little stressors every now and then, but I think that definitely being in the spring as a senior is just a little less stressful, but I can say that being a junior definitely is very stressful, there's a huge workload, so I understand where Carrie's coming from.
Yeah, Elizabeth or Catherine, are you guys feeling that at all?
Um, yeah.
For your cohorts, I don't want to make this all about you, but yeah.
Yeah, I think um, my cohort especially, um, I find I'm getting a lot more homework this term, I don't know if it will remain in um, the next term, but I find that I've gotten a lot more homework and a lot more tests and things are moving at a much quicker pace as well.
Right, Elizabeth, any thoughts or?
Yeah, um, just this year typically things just always ramp up and they always go faster, um, but obviously nothing compared to what the juniors are experiencing, so it's not that bad.
All right, thank you, anybody else?
I do have a question, I have two questions, but my first question is, um, Elizabeth, you mentioned that advisory had choices to do instead of just doing the same old, same old, what were some of the choices? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so some of them were like skincare, um, pets, you can talk about your pets. There were some video games, there was Star Wars, there was just a bunch of different topics and stuff for everyone to go to, it was really awesome.
More like a stress reliever?
Sorry?
Kind of like, more like a stress reliever kind of, uh, yeah.
Yeah, like free time.
You have just told me more than my son after probably forty straight minutes of questioning on my part I got out of him, I'd be like, what, what did you do? And he's like, um, no, we did something, it was okay, it was, so, thank you.
Well, and I've got a thought of another question and that is, and I know you, and I'm psyched that morale is lifting and this is very positive, so I don't want to bring this down, but I do know the realities that there's a lot of anxiety at the school and different kids are feeling things in, in different ways and I'm wondering that, um, do you feel that kids know where to go to in the schools for help if they, if they need a little kind of boost, so to speak, or, or direction in terms of how to get help? Do you feel like you guys know where to go or if your friends are having, um, you know, a situation going on, where to direct your friends?
And this is across the board, right, Anime? Like this is not only just academic, but you know,
Everything.
Concerns about everything.
Um, yeah, I think that, um, like, for the most part, people do know where to go, I know there's a bunch of clubs, um, at school, like one of them is Active Minds, that they do like posters and they, they like have them around the school and also just, I think the guidance office also might have different, um, flyers around the school that, um, talks about that. I also think I saw an email today from guidance, um, at least for the seniors, there's going to be some sort of suicide prevention. I think maybe like speaker or something, I just glazed over it quickly, but I just saw that um, it was something along the lines and it was about like reaching out for help and stuff like that, so I think that'll be a good resource, at least for the seniors, but, um, and I know that around the school, there's also flyers.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, also, um, this is just from my experience, uh, my guidance counselor, she's been sending out emails just maybe like once a month, just regularly, just to check in on everyone, it's like, because she sends like an email to like the group of the students that she oversees, so yeah, that's what she's been doing.
Oh, that's fantastic to hear, great, thanks.
Yeah, just to add on, um, Ava just mentioned the Active Minds Club, which I'm a part of, and we did just hang up a ton of just motivational and inspirational posters around the school to kind of just give everyone that little boost of confidence and I know um, we are working on getting speaker to the school to also talk about suicide prevention and stuff like that.
I'm also part of the Active Minds Club and, yeah, the posters looked really good, along with, I feel like the compliment, the kindness week too this week has been super helpful and then I feel like this year more than ever, like I've heard from teachers like reach out, like there, there's a ton of, ton of like resources for us, so.
Good, thank you.
Great, thanks Carrie.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say, I, I know that you guys, I think, do the kindness week every year, is that right? Yeah. And I, I heard, I remember hearing about it in previous years and it is always something that kind of blows me away and is so very impactful and I've seen it, um, in years past, all the post-its and just especially in a year like this. That's just awesome, you know, it's such a visual reminder and the fact that every single person gets something, um, it's just very powerful and, and thank you guys for keeping up.
Yeah. You guys, I just want to say how incredibly resilient we've seen all of you be through this, you know, that sometimes I think you guys have been more resilient than, than we have been as parents, as adults. And that, it speaks well of you, it really does. Every kid, everywhere, it really, this is not something you ever expected. And I'm, I think we could all say we're proud of you. So, anyway, now Leo, you can talk before I get mad.
I don't know if I can top that, but I just, I want to say that that was, that was a, that was deep, but, um, no, the, the special interest time of those, those topics everything else has really built that connectiveness and I've heard that back from people, particularly in the freshman class, that it's really helped in that transition. Uh, which I know is hard and so I want to thank you. I also want to thank you for including the extra large sizes in your fundraising because unfortunately I'm in the extra large size and so I'll continue to offer that. So thank you very much, I will continue to fundraise on those, so keep those XL sizes coming, thank you.
I hear you. This, uh, this pandemic has not been great for, uh, for getting small size.
Football shirt too, it was, it was good and, uh, and any of them I will continue to order, so, um, but, uh, thank you for that.
All right. Anything else you guys would like to add right now, anything that you're thinking of or this isn't our last one, is it Jeff? This wouldn't be Ava's last.
Not yet.
Not yet, all right, you got one more?
She's got one more.
Okay, we'll make it special. All right, thank you all so much, I appreciate it. And, uh, our next item on the agenda is a fall twenty twenty one outlook for our schools and I asked Dr. Marsden kind of start talking about this early, although we have no really great, uh, information, but I think that if we can kind of start looking forward to what next school year might look like, then we can start kind of preparing ourselves for that. So, um, Dr. Marsden, take it away.
Uh, thanks Jeff, so I, as you know, I meet with the commissioner typically, uh, once a week, uh, he meets with all the superintendents and and, um, you know, talks a little bit about what's going on presently, but what to look at in the future. And, uh, he didn't have a meeting with us this week, but in the last couple of weeks, he's talked to us uh, about what we should plan for and look for in September. And, you know, I'm happy to say that, uh, the outlook right now, as of today, is that it's full reopening as we're doing now. Uh, there'll definitely be some mitigation that takes place like we, we're doing now in our schools, we'll have, I'm sure we'll have masks probably for at least the end of the calendar year, if not a little bit longer, we'll still have some distancing, all the disinfecting protocols, all this stuff that we have done this whole school year. It, it's my expectation that that stays in place, uh, even with the state guidance that's going to be coming out over the summer, but um, I, I think that's why it was critically important for us to get back to full in person this year. So we're not, we're not asking questions and wondering, you know, over the summer, what it's going to be like, we, we're going to know what it's like because we're we would have had a few months in that full in person with the mitigation, um, and, and get everyone through that, that process, so um, that, that's, that's what we're planning for, we are planning for, uh, a full return in person. We're not looking at any additional days in the beginning of the year as we had this year that the state had mandated those additional days that started us in mid-September, where we're looking at starting when the, we, when the calendar says, you guys said it was going to in the calendar you approved. So we're not looking at that mid-September as we did this past year, so, um, all of that is, is really positive news and I think that, um, we're all looking forward to a sense of normalcy and coming back to a, a regular September with all of our kids in person.
Okay, uh, does anybody have any thoughts, questions? Queries, I think it was just important to kind of like have Dr. Marsden just really talk about where we look like we are now, that it's not going to be that kind of crazy summer trying to figure everything out while we're in the air trying to work it out, so. Anyone?
Yeah, I suppose tying it into what even Leo said earlier about, you know, Yeah, I suppose tying it into what even Leo said earlier about, you know, let's review what, what was kind of, you know, on the chopping block last year, and, and, um, to discuss the things that hope, might be able to be brought back, but really, um, and also, I, I'm thinking about, um, you know, the extra supports that are going to be needed for the new year, and I'm, I'm, I know full well that you're on top of that as well, but to just share what you're thinking on that, the extra safety nets that are going to be needed for, um, for those who will need just the extra support.
Well, and actually, if we could talk a little bit about, have you heard from the commissioner yet? Because I think this ties in, um, or, uh, kind of where the, um, the funding that, uh, is coming to us has to go, I know that there's twenty percent of it that has to go to kind of learning loss, and then eighty percent to something else. Where are you, where are you seeing that going at this point? I don't know what's.
So, um, when they met with us last week, they said the parameters are still, I mean, it's been out in the media where, where some of it is, but, uh, that's from the federal government, then when it funnels down to the state, sometimes there's additional, uh, strings attached to it, so to speak, so, um, I would assume that we'll know that next week or the week after. Um, but I think it's, you know, it's important that when money comes in the federal government, everyone understands this, that, uh, Medfield, they use the Title I mechanism to disperse the money, and that's not great for Medfield, so, it just isn't, so we have communities that, you know, we could almost throw a stone to getting millions, and, and, you know, we're not, so, it's just the way it works, and unfortunately, if the, the one thing the commissioner did let us know is that the state did put aside some money that, uh, because they know this doesn't really help a lot of districts in a big way. I guess the frustrating part for me is, it, it helps a lot of districts in a big way that aren't even in person yet, you know? They're still remote and have been remote, and probably will be remote the rest of the year, um, and they got waivers, and they're getting millions of dollars, so it's just, it's not a great system to disperse money, uh, but it's, we can't do anything about that right now, we had our legislative breakfast uh, with the tech communities, I, I did mention that as part of my remarks to the, to the group, that i- if you fund per student like the state does, that's much better for communities like us, um, and it creates that equity among all districts, but when you just use that quick and fast, which they already, it's easy for them to do, and that's why they do it, but it doesn't help us a lot.
Yeah.
But we will get more information the next couple of weeks, we haven't even had the application yet to, to apply for it, and we haven't got any of that information yet, so, it's still a little ways away.
All right, I just wanted to see if there was any update there. Um, anyone else? Anime, did you have something else you wanted to ask about, or Leo?
Yeah.
Um, then I'm going to open this to, uh, public input, if anybody has anything that they would like to say. Again, with the same process, just raise your hand and, uh, announce your full name and address, and uh, you'll have up to three minutes to talk about that specifically, about the fall outlook for schools in 2020. Anyone? Give it a reasonable amount of time. And perhaps while we're waiting on that, uh, Dr. Marsden, do you have any other items since posting on March twenty ninth?
I do, I just want to announce that, um, a- as our students had mentioned in their remarks, uh, our pool testing continues to, to go well, um, we have really high participation rates, over seventy percent in both schools, and our, um, almost all of our staff participating, you know, my colleagues are getting like thirty-five percent, forty percent, just breaking fifty percent, so it's really great that our kids and our families see this as a really important piece of staying in school in, in person. Um, so to that end, Congressman Jake Ock, Ockeslaw will be visiting, uh, the district on Thursday, the eighth, I think it's the eighth. Uh, he'll be coming to observe, uh, our, our nurses that have it down to a science right now, uh, doing the pool testing, as you heard, the ball, the kids mentioned that it's, it's really quick, it's super efficient, uh, so he's going to come on, um, on, on the eighth to observe that in the morning at our high school, and just talk to us about how the process is working, you know, what the benefits we see, so just really a positive, you know, um, our delegation, our local delegation will be there, certainly the school committee, uh, you are, folks are invited to be there as well. Um, but we're, we're going to do it all physically distanced, and he just wants to see it working, because he's heard so many good things about it, as you, you know, I never said it publicly, you know that the Baker administration also reached out to us about a month ago to do the same thing, but we couldn't coordinate schedules, uh, and he ended up going to Newburyport instead, but, um, I just think it's, you know, we, our nurses are doing a phenomenal job, we have high participation, and it's just, you know, great to, to showcase some of the work that our, our students and, and our staff are doing, so, I just wanted to add that, I know that what didn't make it to the agenda, but just an, uh, an important piece.
Right, and that's also one of the, uh, not to go off topic, but within the pooled testing, that's one of our kind of ace in the hole, should we begin to have a surge within the community, um, that we can increase the number of times that we do pooled testing if necessary, and that was one of the things that we had talked to Board of Health about, that if we noticed that there were things kind of increasing, we could also increase the number of times that we do pooled testing if we felt that that was necessary to keep on top of the safety interventions.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's free, but, uh, yeah.
I don't think it's free, but.
We can absolutely do that.
Great.
We can absolutely do that, but, um, that would be, there would be an additional cost to that.
Right, right, but I know that we had talked about it, and that this is part of the kind of flexible funding that we're looking at, but, all right, so I didn't see any, uh, public comment on the, um, on next year's, uh, kind of outlook for that school year. And is there anything, uh, that anybody would like to comment on around, uh, the, uh, legislator, um, Austin classes, um, visit for next week, or, you know?
I'm gonna bring back some money. Just tell her to bring some bags of money.
It's all part of the process. All right, not seeing any questions around that, uh, let's move on to old, but business, which, uh, the first thing we have on there is the fiscal year twenty-two budget update.
Uh, Madam Chair, nothing's really changed since our, our last meeting on the Monday. The, the Warren Committee has a meeting this evening, and all indications say that they're in the, the, the Board Selectmen also had a meeting um, last Tuesday, Tuesday before about budget, um, and it looks like that they're supporting our three point nine nine percent increase for this year, so, um, I haven't heard anything, I don't know if, um, Anime or Megan or Michael have heard anything different, but that's kind of where, where we are right now in this holding, holding pattern with the three point nine nine.
Okay.
But it sounds, but it sounds like we're going to kind of re-investigate that in a, in a future meeting and look at, um, some of the positions that we, we've cut in, in the fiscal year twenty-one, so, what we can look at that and look at how we arrange that three point nine nine, if we have, if you guys have additional, uh, positions that you think want to add in there. It'll have to come from somewhere else, or we have to cut something, add something, so.
And I just think it's important to, uh, you know, to re, reanalyze exactly what our ask is, Jeff, that's all, and, you know, the town, you know, we've done a good job, um, you know, how working with the town, and, um, you know, we've made concessions, and I think that's important, uh, to Megan's point in the last meeting, that we absolutely need to make sure that we are being able to support, particularly with the, the year we've had, we're going to need additional supports, and I want you to be honest with us in what your need, um, you know, because obviously we, we lean on you on, on those recommendations, you and your team about what the, they, that need is, and so, uh, and then we appreciate your position on, you know, working with the town, um, but as, you know, you know, we don't want to make sure that we're, we're advocating, uh, for what is really needed for the, you know, for the students, uh, on your behalf, so, um, so that's, that's just want to make sure what we're doing.
Yep, we'll have that for the next meeting, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Um, anyone else? Yeah, okay, then I would open that up to public comment, and again, uh, we'll raise your hand and announce your full name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes for your comments. All right. Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand, and we have a relatively small, uh, audience tonight, so. I think we could have gotten there, okay, uh, so then we're going to move on to the new elementary school project update. And Dr. Marsden, again, if you want to take that away, and then we'll have, uh, Anime and Leo check in too.
Sure, so, um, still making a lot of progress forward with the project, we've, um, met with a landscape designer, uh, last week as, as part of the school building committee meeting, uh, they were able to show kind of their vision of what the landscape looks like, and it's really coming together nicely, and, and the nice thing about it is at the Wheelock site, the synergies that we're now seeing between Wheelock and the new elementary school, and you really get a great sense of it when you see the landscape design on that, which has been great. Um, we met with all the, the, we met with the police chief and the fire chief this week, uh, to just kind of get their sense of what they would like to see, and looking at at different, um, areas of access around the two schools, and that was really helpful, and they were, you know, wonderful, um, giving their time for that meeting, so that was great, um, and then earlier today, uh, Steve and I and Holly met uh, with the design team to talk a little bit about, again, those synergies that we see between the two buildings, which is really important, and a critical reason why we, all the boards in town decided to, to have the, the, the building put there, you know, so that, that was really good. Um, you know, we still meet on, on, on Monday with the, uh, the, uh, the working group meeting. Uh, we were meeting every other Monday, now we, we're meeting every Monday that started about a month ago or so, so that's, it's, it's starting to really ramp up in terms of design and the process, and, and what we're looking at, the, the classrooms, um, starting to look at the classroom wings, and, and how that plays out, and what that, what we like to see there in the classroom wings. I mean, the great thing is that we're doing this after, um, one of the consultants from Arrow Street met with all the teachers numerous times to get all their input, they put that into design, then we sit down and go through all that, so it's a really collaborative process, it's not just, you know, the design team and Michael and me and Mike, and that's just not the way it is, it's, it's pretty collaborative, so, um, we're happy that it's going well, and we're moving forward, and we're still on target for our, our submissions this summer, and I know that, um, Anime's working really hard with the, uh, communications subcommittee.
Okay. Um, anybody have?
I just, I want to reiterate how, you know, we had a meeting last Wednesday night, the, the SBC, and, um, to see those designs, and we're going to try and push those out to the community, at least the, definitely the clip of that meeting, because it really brings everything to life, and, you know, Leo mentioned the walking classroomer around the, the field, so it's just, it's, it's coming to life, and it's making it real, and, and to Jeff's point, um, when you see it all together, it makes sense to be at Wheelock, and for, for a variety of reasons, and, um, but anyways, so that was a really great meeting, and, um, I do want to mention the net zero, um, building.
Right, sorry.
Um, no, no, that's great, so, um, Megan Sullivan and the folk, you know, Alex Stevens and Tom Herb, and all those folks on the Sustainability Subcommittee have worked tirelessly and analyzed data, and, you know, I, I was so impressed with their presentation, and it sounds to me, I believe, that the selectmen did approve pursuing the net zero building this past week, I believe it was on Tuesday night, so I, I, you know, I think that's great for our town, great for the future, and, um, but I just, I want to thank the folks on that Sustainability Committee, truly.
Yeah, they've put a lot of work into supporting that movement, I was actually, um, I was very pleased with the selection's, uh, approach to it, and that they're, you know, them, you know, approving to move forward with the net zero, um, I was pleasantly surprised about it, to be honest.
No, I, it, yeah, but they, they, they put out, you know, they put out great information, a great case, and the cost savings long-term, it, it made sense, so I am grateful for that, and then we have our next meeting next Wednesday, and, um, I encourage folks who are tuned in to please sign up for the email updates, and also follow us on Facebook for the Elementary School Project, so. That's the plug.
Anything else? Anyone? Okay, then I'm going to open that up to public comment, I, I think we've heard this before, about six other times during this meeting, but I'm going to tell you again, uh, if you would like to comment, please raise your hand, uh, on the screen and announce your full name and address when we bring you over, and keep your comments to three minutes, and we will not, uh, not have a dialogue, it will simply be, um, uh, we can ask clarifying questions, but other than that, it's simply a comment. So, anyone? Somebody watch out for the hands for me, please? All right. Okay, so now we move on to donations, uh, Dr. Marsden?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just have a couple of donations I would ask for the committee to approve, um, four thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents from the Dale Street PTO, Dale Street School PTO, to the Dale Street School to purchase desk dividers in floor mats. Uh, the dividers that we've added with the additional students in there with additional desks, in the floor mats we're using, uh, for, if kids are having lunch in spaces outside of their classroom, um, because really neat floor mats that the kids are using, and then, uh, five hundred dollars from Grin and Barrett Enterprises to Blake Middle School Gift Account. Uh, that's the photographer that, uh, Blake uses for their student photos, I asked if you, you, uh, approve those as presented.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve donations in the amount of four thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents from the Dale Street PTO, and in the amount of five hundred dollars from Grin and Barrett Enterprises to the Blake Middle School Gift Account?
I moved, Anime.
I moved, Anime, and, oh, you're second?
Second, Megan.
Okay, and then I'm going to do a roll call, and just so you guys know, this is the only vestige of like the old days that I have, is that I'm thinking of the roll call the way that we used to all sit, and I hope that someday we'll get there again, but that's, I do, so, uh, Leo Brem?
Hi.
Okay, Tim Knight?
Hi.
Megan Glenn?
Hi.
Anime O'Shea Brook?
Hi.
And Jessica Riley?
I.
And I, I just want to add, if I could, um, I just, you know, when we have donations like this, it just underscores, um, the importance of the organizations that support the school districts every single year, whether it's Arcade A PTO, or High School PTO, PTO, or MCP, um, just great support all the time, and, uh, just really appreciate their, their work around that.
One hundred ten percent.
Uh, actually, that might lead to, uh, our informational items, I do know, um, if, uh, Dr. Marsden, you wanted to go through whatever informational items you have now?
Yeah, so I just had one informational item that was in your materials, uh, I included a determination from the Department of, uh, Secondary Education, Elementary Secondary Education, DESI, uh, from a September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one complaint. Um, if you remember, we had a string of complaints that happened, once one person made a complaint, then put them on social media, added to it, and we got a string of, I think, eleven, twelve, thirteen, or fourteen complaints, uh, I think this is, this may be the original one, and, a- as you can imagine, DESI's really backlogged on this, um, so they, they found us in compliance and closed out the complaint, so I just want to put that in there, so you guys had a copy of that, and, um, I'm waiting for, you know, twelve or thirteen more, hopefully like that, so we'll see.
Okay. Um, and, uh, I have some informational, or actually, would anybody like to ask Dr. Marsden about that? I'm sorry, I don't want to get ahead of myself, anyone? Okay. Um, I do have a couple of informational items in that, uh, I am going to be sending out, uh, queries around, um, assuming that, uh, we have kind of a more normative summer in terms of meetings, and the things that we have to do as opposed to meeting once or twice a week, as we did throughout last summer, um, uh, I'd like to, if we could, uh, think about holding a series of, of workshops, kind of working meetings around a number of different topics that we've started, but have also, uh, kind of committed to before the pandemic, and we wanted to kind of move on with them. You know, around like, uh, revenue and town school department working relationships, um, and budgeting relationships, uh, school committee roles, uh, communication in particular, you know, that's one that we've been trying to continue through this year, and whether we need to come up with a communication subcommittee, as we've kind of posited, and what that would look like, and, um, and if there are others, please, you know, let me know, we don't have to talk about them now, but just know that I'll be asking for dates and for feedback uh, around that, and that would obviously be, um, something you would give to me, and then I would kind of reflect out to the committee, so. Um, I see those, uh, actually, as, um, if it could, if we could be so fortunate as in-person workshops in the summer, perhaps, um, so that we kind of really finally get to have the chance to sit in the same room again, and really kind of hash some of the stuff out that we haven't done for a really long time, so, um, and then, uh, I think, uh, that's about it, we are actually, uh, moving our school choice hearing, which we were. that's about it. We are actually moving our school choice hearing, which we ordinarily have the first weekend of, or the first week of June or so. We're moving it to our next meeting. Just so I just want to give you guys the heads up. There's no reason that we need to hold it in June at that point. So we might as well do it now and think about it now as things come up. Okay. Other informational items? I know, Tim, you wanted to kind of contribute something.
No, it's just, and Dr. Marston mentioned it, you know, you, and you, Dr. Marston, you mentioned it again, even, you know, thanking the PTO that donation. But no, the onward campaign, I just, you know, I couldn't be happier with anything else. Really the collaboration with, with Bill and the PTO and the MCP. There is that expression you hear, you know, they were finishing your sentences. And as soon as the group really came together and with, with Dr. Marsden and you, you were very open to, to the group. It's been, it's just been, you know, fun to watch and the spirit of, we really want to help is, has been awesome. And then the early feedback from the community, I think the whole, you know, I didn't realize how good they were at social media and emails, but we're getting a lot of emails and fundraising. That's a loud voice, but I think where I really wanted to go is again, bring, bring in, and we're just you know, working more closely together, getting signal from the schools. And I thought it was interesting what Bill said today, you know, somebody I'd never heard of kind of came up to me and said, hey, I really want to help. And there's a lot of those people out there who, who are cheering us on from the sidelines, but looking for a, a program or an avenue to step up. So, so I, you know, I'm really excited about it. And, you know, I think a few folks on this committee, when I was debating on it, cheered me on to say, no, let's try to do it. And so I'm, I'm just, I'm real excited. I'm excited with where they're going.
Yeah.
And where we're going.
In that, and I think one of the things that you and I have talked about in the context of onward is that this isn't really only about a quick hit flexible funding program, although that is enormously helpful to us right now. Obviously, we were just talking about kind of how money comes to us with strings tied. And sometimes it's a little hard to respond immediately to what you need. But this is also about truly bringing hands together too, and that all of those contributions help. You know, the parents who are able to kind of move desks if it's within the elementary or if there are other projects that we need, maybe someday the, you know, the playground at Memorial or other kind of hands-on projects. This is really about that all of those contributions are important. And we want to be able to bring people together in that way and bring people back into our schools. That way.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I mean, and that's, I think we all know, right? The PTOs and, and you know, things like winter carnival, how, how many hours of time are dedicated to running that, right? Megan, yeah. So, you know, those, it is to me, as, as we look to our next year too, we, we've had an amazing community of helpers. I know we will continue, but it's like, hey, let's think long and hard. Where can the schools need help? And it's, you know, Jeff, what we've said all along is there's nothing worse than people who want to help, but they don't know, you know, like it takes them three hours to learn. And, and so, you know, you, you, you may have gotten an hour of help, but it took you three hours to get them up to speed. We, you know, it's really changing that, that paradigm. So so, yeah, we'll see where, see where it can go as they say onward.
Right. Onward and upward. One of my favorites. Anybody else have a kind of informational item, anything that they want to mention? I would mention that Leo appears to be in his seat. And we're happy to have you back. And I think, congratulations. Yeah, you, you, yeah. And I also want to thank everybody who, who chose to run and for your commitment to to the school and to our kids and to the, just the general idea of kind of opening a dialogue. I always think that's important and we certainly don't expect you to, you know, go away. If, you know, there are so many places that people can fit into in our, in our schools and in our town. Please stick around. Okay. Anybody else? Anyone? Megan, Anime? You got nothing? All right. Well, so we have future agenda items. The first thing is that we will have the mask dot task force update and school choice hearing April 15th. Standards-based report card feedback. We'll do a workshop on that on April 16th at 10:00 AM. And that's with Dr. Powers. And then we have in the summer, Anime is kind of putting together student feedback, kind of the long awaited student feedback kind of conversation she's wanted to have. But I know that's something she's talking about at the SEL Task Force. So hopefully that'll come together in the summer and you can kind of give us your feedback and your understanding of, you know, what you'd like to talk about there. And then we did just talk about that the school choice hearing will be on April 15th. And Dr. Marston, am I missing something? I swear, I just heard something. It would be a future agenda item. Well.
I think what Leo was saying was me. That may have been part of budget.
Okay. Yeah, that'll be within the budget.
You know, I was, I was just thinking, we, when we had David in a little while ago, I think that was helpful from, from, from an SEL perspective. Yeah. But I would, you know, maybe if we, and I'm not, the agendas look pretty full, but you know, maybe you get into May. But like with the specific topic, like, hey, where, where does he really see he needs help? You know, where, where are the, like, I, I think that might be a little bit where he can think about, this is where I really need help. It's, I know, we know the update, right? He gave us a very good update before, but thinking about, okay, based on that, this is where I think I, we might be struggling a little bit. You know, you don't have to use that. We could be more open-ended, but it gets him thinking a little bit about it.
Do you want to add that to future agenda items for May? Does that make sense?
Yeah. Or maybe it's something that the two of you want to talk about with, with Dr. Worley first, and then we can kind of decide like how where that within SEL, kind of like how you want to, I mean.
Yeah, Tim and I can connect and then we can look at what date works best, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that might be great too. The, you know, I'm asking for my own work. Like, but yeah, let's think about what, what you may ask. I think that might be helpful. And I thought it is, you talk about bringing Christine and talking about, okay, what's going on on learning? They just, they go hand in hand.
Right.
That's when I, I just want to.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll, we'll put a pin in that one. Okay. And we'll see how that.
Yeah, I kind of see that all tying in together in terms of, you know, the safety nets for the, for moving forward. You know, Dr. Worthley, you've got, you know, the, the assessments, but then you've got the building principles that you know all eyes on. So I think, yeah, all connected.
So where, where can volunteer efforts and support that way kind of fit into all of those plans?
And if we wait till May, that will give us also a few weeks to really get a good assessment in terms of everyone back in, right?
Right.
So that will, I'm sure we'll have some same surface that Dave will be working on and we'll have a pretty good sense of what that is at that point.
Yeah, because I'm, I reckon that, you know, Missy will have an eye on, you know, what's happening at Memorial, you know, what are the big themes coming out at every school and whatnot? And I think that's important.
And what the summer needs to look like for our kids and for our parents, you know, we will have been back in, but then all of a sudden we're gone again for 10 weeks. And kind of what does that summer look like? Are there supports that we're putting in? So, yeah, I mean, it seems like a decent
Yeah.
time for, for you, Jeff. Obviously you're working on this, but it's kind of a lot about how and what we get to understand and what the community understands around kind of where we're thinking too.
That's a good bundle. It's a good bundle in with Christine's report out too, you know, about what their findings are, what the benchmark assessments and whatnot.
That's what I was saying. Yes. So Christine will be your, thank you. That was the, the part that I was missing. In early May. Thank you, Leo. Appreciate it. Okay. Would it be safe to say at this point that the next meeting is April 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM? And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved Anime.
Second.
All right. And we'll do a roll call then. So for Leo Brem?
Hi.
Thank you. And Tim?
I reckon I support. I like that term. I gotta use it.
I reckon. She brings that out for the big guns. I gotta tell you. And Megan Glenn?
Yes.
All right. And Anime O'Shea Brook?
Yes.
With you today that I just can't.
Not me.
I know it's me. I know. And Jessica Riley, I, the meeting is adjourned at remarkably 8:20 PM. And if that isn't a record for the last year and a half, I don't know what is. All right. Good night, all.
Hi, thank you.
Good night to everybody who stuck with us. Thank you very much.